Meeting is called to order. John, can you lead us in the invocation, please?
Sure. Please stand if you're able, or if you're wearing pants. At this council meeting, help us to make decisions which keep us faithful to our mission and reflect our values. Give us strength to hold to our purpose, wisdom to guide us, and a keen perception to lead us. And above all, keep us charitable as we deliberate.
Stacy, can you introduce our pledge reciter, please?
I certainly can. Marina Von Baron is the senior class president, and as well, she sits on the Sustainability Commission for the city of Dunwoody. I've known Marina since she was a kindergartner in Austin Elementary. And Marina, if you're in the line, I've been stalking the DHS 2020 Instagram page, and your senior picture with your plans are not up yet, so I'd love to know that as well.
Hi, everyone. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Sorry, just making sure. I'm outside because I just went to Village Burger to walk there to go support local businesses, you know? But I will be continuing my education at Georgia Tech. I'll be getting a master of majoring in business, and I'm really excited. Hopefully, I'll be able to help out their sustainability program there as well. I, again, go to Johnny High School. I'm a senior. I'm sad that our senior year had to come to an end so early and so soon, but I am so happy to be here with you guys today to be able to recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Oh, sorry. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Marina.
Of course. Thank you for having me.
Thank you very much. It's time for public comments. And Ginger, I believe you have at least someone who signed up ahead of time. And then if you could just briefly explain the process for others if they want to participate.
Yes, so we have William Odette, who will be the first person speaking for public comment. Everyone gets three minutes. I'll give you a notification at the 30 seconds until your three minutes are up. And for this first segment, we have 30 minutes total for the speakers. If you did not pre-register, you can raise your hand after William has completed his time, and I will call on you and let you speak as well.
And Ginger, how do they raise their hand?
There is, if you go to the bottom, it actually has, I think it's under... Mine looks a little bit different than everybody else's, but it should be there. Oh, my goodness. There's a, I know there's a place where those raise hands. I think it's at the bottom of your screen, but...
It's at the bottom of the screen.
All right, thank you.
Um, William, you should be able to speak now, if you would.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Uh, Lynn?
Yes, sir, your three minutes. If I can hear you.
Okay, listen, we have a salon around the parkway right there. And this has put a lot of people out of big business. You guys shut us down a week before even March started. So we've been down for three weeks as of actually today. You got a really, you got a lot of people out there that are really pissed off right now, and they're getting really antsy. And I want to know, right now, when the federal government says, "Open up this economy", are the little cities going to screw with people and then hold everybody back? Because you're going to put people out of business doing this.
Mr. Odette, under state law, we don't engage, we just take your comments. So if you want to finish, we can reach out by email.
Oh, so you won't answer somebody that's a businessperson in Dunwoody?
Because of open meetings, laws in the state of Georgia, we can't engage in conversation during public comment. Perhaps we can address it later in the meeting.
So you're, so you're taking my comment, but you're not answering my question?
Yes, sir, because we're limited by what we can do due to open rec, uh, state law.
Well, what's, what's the point, then? What's the point of even doing this? Because you guys, when you didn't hold this meeting the first time, you already had your mind made up. You didn't talk to anybody in any business in Dunwoody and give a rat's butt about anybody that works around you people that puts money into your guys' pockets. You guys have jobs. Some of us don't.
Council member, under our, mayor, under our rules, we don't respond in public comments. So, yeah, as the parliamentarian, that would be my ruling on that.
You know, I knew, I knew you guys weren't going to be any help. Any information, when are you going to put some information on your website about what you guys are thinking about for the future? The immediate future? That's what we need. We have no information coming from the city for any of you guys. You know, keep us updated on what you guys are thinking and what you guys are planning. That's all we're asking, but there's nothing, nothing coming from you guys at all.
Thank you, Mr. Odette, your three minutes. That was the end.
Ginger, are there other people that have raised their hands?
I do not currently see anyone with a hand raised.
Okay. With that, then I end public comments and move to the consent agenda, which is a series of minutes from previous meetings. Does anyone have any questions or corrections on the minutes for the consent agenda? Then I need a motion, please.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Moved by Jim, second by John. All in favor? Raise your hand. Sharon, that passes unanimously. Sharon, I believe you have to read the next few items.
A resolution to declare property surplus to provide a mechanism for the sale or disposal of surplus property and for other lawful purposes.
That's Linda Neighbors.
Yes, I was going to get John Gates, who is the purchasing manager, to respond to that, but I think that he might be having an audio issue, so I'll go ahead and move with that unless John is in yet. John? Okay, those were for items that, when we purchased the property over at the perimeter center east property, were already in the building. Some of it may have been stored from another area, but we are going to surplus. We're asking to surplus those, and we'll be doing that in a couple of different methods. So the, the bigger ticket items, we will try to sell on gov deals. And then there's some that will just be bundled up like in lots. So you would have it on a pallet, and somebody would bid on the whole pallet. And that way, because a lot of that stuff is really not worth the price that it would cost us, the fees that are associated with doing it on gov deals. So we'll treat different things, different ways, but the stained glass, we do want for it to be repurposed for the, the good of the citizens and the city. So we'll be looking at different ways to, that we'll dispose of that. But we're asking to move forward with a surplus, so we can do that. We're, have bids in for the demolition of the building, so that's why it's really kind of important for us to move ahead with that.
Does anyone have any questions? Uh, Joe? Joe, you need to unmute.
Hi, can you hear me? I'm looking at the photographs, Linda, of the attachments there. There looks to be, I think I know what it is, just want to confirm. On the second page in the PDF, the, there's an image with, it looks like some crates, some wooden crates that are marked like 23, 22, 2.6, red, red stencil ink. What are those?
Those are the crated stained glass.
Okay, great. All right, and like you said, most of the stuff was there before we even acquired the building?
Yes, sir.
All right, great, great. Okay, that's all the questions I have. Thank you.
And the other, oh, Tom?
Okay, I'd start off mute. Um, yeah, I, in reference to the stained glass windows, I'd just like to go on record, I don't know if I can speak for the entire council, but I believe that the value in those windows is more historical to this community, and it would be my desire, and hopefully desire of the rest of council, for those to remain in the city of Dunwoody. Hopefully, those can be transferred to a organization with, that has a history of operating within the city and would, and give them their proper historical context. So that, I'd just like to put that on the record for direction for staff.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else have questions? John?
Thank you, Lynn. Yes, I agree with Tom. I believe that those stained glass windows, historically, I believe, came from the Kennedy family that put in the windows in the church, in the sense of the chapel there at Dunbrook Run. I believe there was a proposal or an idea that the Brookrun Conservancy might be a organization that would take the stained glass and do some monuments with them or keep them within the city. But as Tom said, I agree wholeheartedly. The stained glass, it is really historical value, and I'd love to see the stained glass repositioned, recreated, done something with them where they would stay in the city of Dunwoody, whether it be to decorate our public buildings for monuments or something, some art aspect within the city of Dunwoody. And I don't know if there's a formal procedure or ideas already put in place, Eric or Linda, as far as next steps. But what, I agree with Tom. I'm just saying, they should stay within the city of Dunwoody. It should remain some type of beauty and art history or art project here within the city of Dunwoody.
Mayor, if I may interject a couple items. The, yes, so tonight, what we want to do mainly is declare it surplus and also declare the fact that it doesn't have any monetary value. And that gives us more latitude on what we can do within the future. And so we do, we do know that the Brookrun Conservancy is, is interested in the material, the stained glass material that is. And, and we'd like to, this allows the staff to come up with a form or to have a solicitor proposal for people, what they would like to do with the glass, and then we can dispose of that if that meets the desires of the council.
Yes, sir. Anybody else? All right, so I think I need a motion, please.
Motion to approve declaring this material surplus.
Jim, second. Pam, I mean, Jim made the motion. Pam, seconded. All in favor, signify by raising your hand. That's unanimous, Sharon. Thank y'all. And Sharon, whenever you're ready, you can move on to the next. Sharon?
A resolution to declare property surplus to provide a mechanism for the sale and disposal of surplus property and for other lawful purposes.
Okay, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay, that, we are also asking to surplus that equipment from the IT department. They came in and assessed that the ones that they're asking for it to be surplus, that they are unusable and outdated. And it seems as the value of the, of the inventory will just continue to go down if we don't go ahead and make this move to surplus test, please.
Any questions? Okay, seeing none, may I have a motion, please?
Move to approve. Second.
Moved by John, second by Sharon. All in favor, signify by raising your hand, please. Sharon, that's unanimous.
A resolution amending the budget for the fiscal year 2019 for each fund of the city of Dunwoody, Georgia pursuant to Article 5, Section 5 of the Charter of the City, beginning January 1, 2019, and ending December 31, 2019, appropriating the amount shown in each budget as expenditures, adopting the item of anticipated funding sources, prohibiting expenditures to exceed appropriations, and prohibiting expenditure from exceeding actual funding sources.
Linda, you're on, please.
Okay, I'm sorry to interject, but I did just want to make sure that that last vote was, get corrected whoever, because I think you said that Sharon seconded?
No, it was John and Jim.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just...
Tell Sharon who did the, who made and seconded the motion.
Okay, this is necessary, the budget amendment is necessary to clean up the 2019 fiscal year. And I need to have this for the, even though we're still working on the audit, I will need this because you have to end the year with a balanced budget. And the ones I would like to bring to your attention are in the grant funds, which was 1,142,669. Those were grants that we received from GDOT, and they were all transportation projects. So we did have the expenditures, and we had the revenues as well. Let's see, we had the Georgia Transportation Infrastructure Bank. That was the State Road and Tollway Authority. We also had the Georgia Intelligent Transportation System. Well, we had two of the infrastructure banks, so that's what made up all of those revenues and expenditures. So that was the biggest ticket item. And then the next one, excuse me, down the road, that is, that's called 560, is, that's the fund, and that's Stormwater. And we did anticipate, at least from what I understood at the time the budget was created, that we would be going into fund balance for that amount in 2019. So that's the $569,436.
There are questions? Joe?
Now, Linda, could you just, for the non-accounting folks here, for myself, I'm looking at the resolution, and it talks about, in the, in the verbiage under revenues, it says, "over receipts", not budgeted, receipts, so over receipts, over receipts. Are we saying that we were, we were over our budgets? Or are these, is this all neutral? Did we actually bring in the corresponding revenues to meet these expenditures? Or were these additional expenditures that were not originally budgeted?
Well, each line, like I said, the, like, for example, the Stormwater, that was anticipated that we would go into fund balance. But the other things, I'll give you an example of, this is the fund 280. It has the 280 out to the left-hand side. And our original budget was for $100,000. And in the, in the year of 2019, we actually collected $108,000. So what, what, to recognize what you say, the over receipts, I'm, I think there's probably a better word for that to make it more in Laban's terms, but that's, in essence, what it means. And so the corresponding amount down in the expenditures in that fund is where the money was transferred out to the general fund. So more came in, therefore, more went out. So it really is not taken from any fund balance, except for, like I said, the Stormwater, some of the seized funds. You real, that's really hard to predict what's coming in and out of there. But so it, this, the budget, and these are all outside of the general fund, but this, excuse me, makes it a balanced budget.
All right, great. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, I need a motion, please.
Motion to approve the adjusted budget for 2019.
Pam makes the motion.
Second.
Second by Stacy. All in favor, signify by raising your hand. That passes unanimously, Sharon. Thank you.
A resolution to waive penalties and interest for payments for 2020 occupational taxes and business licenses received after April 15, 2020.
Okay, Linda, I think, nope, yeah, Linda, you're up again.
So our occupational taxes, which is the equivalent with the business license, those become due on January 1 of each year. And our, our code ordinances are written such that you won't accrue penalties and interest until after April 15. So that date is approaching, and we're just, I would say, recommending that we would waive the penalties and interest. So the penalties are 10% of what's due, and then, of course, the interest will be on top of that. So we're just asking or recommending that those penalties and interest is waived until the emergency is over, and that's what we have here for vote.
So does anybody have questions? So I have a comment, Linda, and I'm not sure how we can fix it, but the emergency could be declared over. But if businesses haven't operated, I think we need to give some time. Does that make sense?
I'm sorry, try that again.
So to make some, I have to be careful because hypotheticals will get me in trouble, but there will be a date when the emergency is declared over, correct?
Right.
But if we have businesses that literally have not been operating or have been operating at a much lower rate than normal, it seems to me that we would need to give them a certain amount of time. We should extend it beyond the emergency. Does that make sense?
Oh, yes, but it, I'm not trying to be disrespectful, but it will require a vote as well.
So we can't fix that now? We can't amend this now to your, your resolution, the resolution to say 60 days or 90 days after the amendment? I see Jay has his hand up. Hold on. Okay, Jay.
But that's actually something that you could do with a friendly amendment on it. Just give the city manager the ability to extend the program out for 90 days past the state of emergency and administratively create the deadline then. And I think that would work, just to tweak this amendment, tweak this resolution as you have it now.
Okay, so we need an amendment to that, to do that? Yes, okay. I will make the amendment myself, or if somebody on council wants to.
Yeah, I'd like to move to men's resolution to allow, sorry, my dogs are making a motion as well, to, to, with the language that Jay used to allow that to be done administratively.
Is there a second?
I will second that 90-day extension.
The amendment was made by Tom to give the city manager the power to extend the deadline 90 days after the emergency is ended. Second by John, are there any questions or comments on the amendment? Seeing none, all in favor of the amendment, raise your hand, please. All right, the amendment passes unanimously. Now we're back to the original motion that has been amended. Are there any other questions or comments about the amendment? I mean, about the motion, the resolution?
So I'm sorry, I would just like to be clear that we are extending the April 15 deadline by 90 days. And as...
The deadline would be 90 days after the emergency ends.
Okay.
Are there any other questions or comments on the resolution itself?
Move to approve the resolution.
Thank you, John. I need a second.
Second.
Stacy unmuted, she gets it. Moved by John, seconded by Stacy, all in favor, signify by saying, raising your hand. That passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Intergovernmental agreement for the distribution of EHOSTs proceeds, Jay Beneky.
Mayor and council, for those that don't remember, two years ago, when the county voters passed the SPOLOX referendum, tied to it was a changing of the way that the host was structured, and it's now called an EHOST, which is, means equalized host. Like all good laws, it was very complex. And once passed and approved by the voters, they found out there wasn't really a mechanism for one scenario. The EHOST tax relieves all countywide taxes, of which there's only two, the general fund and the fund that does grading, the hospital fund. Well, there could be a scenario where the county actually receives as a whole more than is taxed on that. And the law says that that shall be distributed between the cities and the unincorporated areas on an equal basis, but it was unclear what that basis was. During most of last year, the cities and the county worked on a negotiation, and that's the IGA you have before you, which creates the, as I call it, the map to distribute it if this scenario ever comes into play. 2020 was the first year it might come into play, but you will not know until the digest for all the cities actually come in, in the May-June timeframe. And at that time, it'll know. Without passing this, the Department of Revenue has no way of distributing the money, and it would just sit at the Department of Revenue. So I think to date, six or seven of the cities have already passed this, and it's before you in the same form as it is with all the other... before you in the same form as it is with all the other cities. Any questions?
Anybody have questions? I see no questions. Oh, Jim has a question.
Jim has a motion, move to approve the IGA.
I need a second, please.
Second.
Move by Jim, second by Pam. Any other discussion or questions? Seeing none, signify, if all in favor, raise your hand. That passes unanimously. Sharon?
Ratification of IT purchase, Jay Beneky.
Mayor and council, this is asking for a ratification of a purchase of some IT equipment that is budgeted and was planned for in this year. However, it was procured before it went to mayor and council. The ball was set in motion with a staff member who is no longer with the city, and they went, they went to procure it using a statewide contract, and after review, we would have still used the same method. The equipment actually came in, and the staff thought it was procured, and they went ahead and installed it, which is great, because now we have better backups. However, the bill came in, and, of course, the checks and balances caught it then, and at this point, we're asking for ratification of the $86,000 for the purchase of the backup material.
Any questions?
Just a comment, better backups are good. Can't ever have enough backups.
Anybody else?
Move to approve. Second.
Approved by Jim, second by John. Any other discussion? Seeing none, vote, and all in favor, raise your hand. Sharon, that passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Eric, do we know if Mr. Gates was able to join the meeting?
I know John is on the line. I see his number. So, John, can you hear us?
I think he can now.
Okay, thank you.
Next item under discussion is status report.
Can you hear me? I'm sorry.
Yes, John, we can hear you.
Okay.
Status report on North Shalford Road property sale, John Gates.
Okay, as the council knows, back in December, you approved the sale of two city-owned properties to Summit Healthcare Group, which is an Emory entity created by them to purchase real estate. The property is anticipated to be used by Emory as an approximate 45,000 square foot three-story ambulatory surgery center with parking. The use of the property will require approval of the rezoning by the city. Summit Healthcare agreed to pay 6.8 million for the property, with other conditions such as in the evening and weekends permitting public parking for overflow at Punishall Park. There are milestones and timing in the purchase-sale agreement, which was on track until recently, when, because of coronavirus 19 challenges, Summit Healthcare Group requested a 30-day extension and moving forward with the rezoning process. At the direction of the city manager, key staff members had a teleconference meeting with representatives from Summit Healthcare, looking to see what we could do to keep the process moving forward. I would like to bring community development in at this point, in that they led the meeting with the summit group. John, or Richard?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
So, yeah.
Richard, we lost you, I think.
I think we lost Richard, but while we're waiting on him to come back in, the, at the end of the day, the Summit Healthcare Group would like to extend the piece, and they're asking for 30 days. And after a conversational email with Fred Sheets, our real estate broker today, he was also mentioning a 60-day piece, and I would push it out far enough to close the deal. It has been shifted around a little bit because of the COVID-19, and they are still interested in purchasing the property, but their claimant is their resources have been spread thin, and that all hands are on deck for their medical purposes, and not so much for real estate acquisition. However, they still are interested in buying the property, and I know that Richard is going to work with them closely, but I would, part of this information tonight is I would ask for the acknowledgement of going out 60 days beyond the original 30-day extension. And Bill, I don't know if you have anything you want to add, or if you're in agreement.
That's right. The first two phases, we would give them the extension. The last phase would be the 30 days with the end date remaining the same. In discussion with Cecil on this, he indicates that they put some extra time into the front end of it, and so, we should continue to aim for the same end date at the end of the year.
Does anyone have questions or comments? So, we're not voting, you just need our tacit approval to extend it by 60 days, is that correct?
I'm fine with that. I just wanted to have, due to the circumstances, just wanted to be sure everybody's kept in the loop where we are on that. I just wanted it documented in the record that we are asking for an extension.
Right. I think that we have to be realistic with not just their resources, but ours, and how we're having to meet remotely, and what's practical and what isn't. So, we have to be accommodating of their needs as well as our own. So, I'm fine with that. Does anybody have any questions or comments? All right, seeing none, do you have what you need, Eric? John, Mr. Gates?
I do, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gates. And everybody. All right, so, ginger, public comments again?
If anybody has any comments, any public comments you would like to make, please raise your hand, and I'll allow you to speak. I do not currently see any raised hands.
Thank you. City manager comment?
Yes, I'll give the council a briefing on where we are in our departments. The economic development continues to work on items, primarily focusing on the CARES Act and the Future Economic Stimulus Bill. It's one thing they're working on for, so we have an idea, and so, we can relay that information out to the businesses, especially the businesses that respond. And they're also working closely with Jennifer Betcher to get the information on our website. Michael's working on having a Development Authority Special Call Meeting later this week, perhaps, and also working on the Public Art Implementation Plan. The public survey went out last week, and there's a, we're looking at a new timeline for that, but we're trying to keep that part moving and gather public input on that. Public Works has been quite busy. Fortunately, last night, the storms only had one known tree that was down there at Ashford Dunn Woody Ramp at 285, and it was on the GDOT right-of-way into Cab Fire, came and moved that out of the way, cut that out of the way. The, we're working on construction activities still at Tilly Mill in Andover. Also, Roberts Drive, finalizing the curb form there at the sidewalk with Hollybank Circle Intersection. Paving, the, we're working on Concord Place and Seaton Drive, also Tilly Mill Sidewalk. Georgia Power is now moving the utility lines over there, which is a big deal to get that, to get that underway. The, also Amberly Drive culvert replacement. And I say all this because I hope the public sees the work that's going on in the street, and that the city, even though City Hall is physically closed, it's virtually open, and we're all doing work, and items like Public Works are actually out on the street working on things. And it also gives us the time to work on other projects, such as our IT and GIS upgrades to the stormwater inventory, and uploading that into the GIS system. So, we're having a good time to catch up on items like that. The Peeler Road Sidewalk Project produced 12 bids were received on that. We're going to evaluate those bids, and we'll bring it to the council and evaluate the project as a whole, once we look at the more budgets and things. But we wanted, the bids were already out, and so, those have come back in. We're also coordinating a lot with the PCID on paving in the, in the PCID area, and also painting of the light poles in the area, because some of those have become faded over time since they were originally put up, and the green has lost its sharpness. The, let's see, also going down to communications, Jennifer continues with the D News e-letter, and hopefully, everybody signed up for that in the packet that y'all will receive tonight, and it will be part of the minutes, there's a hot link to that. Also, working on a new project website, as I mentioned earlier, for the Public Art Survey that's on to our website there, and a lot of social media messaging and answering emails from residences and businesses. The Clerk's Office, work continues there. 65 open record requests were processed during the week of, between April 2nd and April 9th. Also, working on items like for tonight's meeting, Sharon and her department have been busy keeping, it's a backbone department for us. The police have had, they're out there patrolling, of course, but just a couple tidbits of information for fund items. They've participated in a couple of drive-through birthday parties to go down the street to, for people who have a, have a birthday. So, the chief always likes to have his staff involved in those type of things. And y'all may see it on the street, but we also rolled out a police car wrapped, it's a wrap for the Autism Awareness Month. So, keep your eye out for that, for that car that's out there. Unfortunately, there are still some things that go on that are negative, and that's why we have the police out there to keep us safe, you know, some burglaries and accidents and things of that nature. One thing I will point out, just if anybody has any information on it, where there was some vandalism at the Boy Scout Building at Dunwoody United Methodist Church. And also, we have some superspeeders going on 285 in excess of 100 miles an hour. We stopped four cars traveling at that, at that kind of speed. So, there are some people out there, and based on what I've seen around the state, that's not unique to Dunwoody, but the road, some of the roads have become raceways, but our folks are out there to, to catch the people doing that. Community development is gearing up to have our first virtual planning commission meeting on May the 12th, so in about a month, we'll have that meeting at 6 o'clock. And so, Richard is gearing up to have those, that, done at that time, if, if we're still in the current status that we're in now. Otherwise, it will be an in-person meeting. The building inspections have been very busy, 34 inspections completed over the past two days. Code enforcement has been very active as well. That will be a very detailed portion in your report you'll receive tonight. Engineering, under community development engineering, Dunwoody High School as well, and branch properties are both still under a stop work order, are waiting on them to provide more information to the department. And then, and my final note is going to be talking about Parks and Recreation, and also Human Resources. Work continues at Brook Run Park. We're also working on a virtual Memorial Day program, and Brent's working hard on that, as well as we continue to prepare contract award documents for the design of Perimeter Center East Park, the demo bids for the building at Perimeter Center East Park, also the demo bids at our newly acquired Waterford property, and also field lighting and installation and park signage installation. So, those will come before the council in the future. Human Resources, once again, has become a backbone department for us during the COVID-19. Heather and Nicole are both tracking all the COVID-19 trends that are out there, and knowing how we need to be responsive for our employees. But anyway, I'm glad to answer any questions, and I will send that out to y'all as soon as the meeting is over. Thank you.
Questions for Eric? Raise your hand. Seeing none, and we don't have executive session, correct? Eric, no executive session?
That is correct, that's correct.
Thank you. All right, council comments? We can, John, do you have any comments? Okay, Joe? Stacy? Pam? Jim?
I just like to say kudos to Eric and whoever on staff worked to produce the column that went out under Eric's byline in the recent issue of the Atlanta Business Chronicle. This was the, you know, the Dunwoody Market Report section in the Business Chronicle, and I think it was a very good article, and I would encourage everyone to go out and read that, if you haven't already, if you're out there listening, again, in the Atlanta Business Chronicle. Thank you.
Tom?
Yes, I'd just like to make a comment. Obviously, the measures we're taking to slow and stop the spread of the COVID-19 virus are things that none of us could have imagined even just a few months ago. I'd like to talk a little bit specifically about the impact it's had on some of the school situation. Obviously, it's affecting students, parents, teachers, administration, all the, all the people working in the school, but I think it's fair to make a statement that it's had a disproportionate effect on the senior class, the class of 2020 this year. And so, I just wanted to send a message out to those students, and those parents, and those families, to let you know that your hometown's got your back, that we have actually been working with the high school to figure out ways to appropriately recognize and honor the class of 2020. We've already reached out to Principal Cole and other key members of the staff at the high school, as well as apparent leadership, and we have some ideas in place. Certainly, any ideas from the community are welcome. You can send those to me, I'll be happy to forward those on to the appropriate people. But I wanted to let you know that we are working on ways to make that happen, and although I did say we're working with Dunwoody High School, I want to recognize the fact that, of course, we have a lot of citizens here in Dunwoody that don't attend, that are in the class of 2020 that might not attend Dunwoody High School, where they attend Shambly or DSA, or Wesley and Maris, Pius, or any of the other private schools. Certainly, we're not going to exclude you, we want to figure out a way to honor and recognize you as well. You know, it's, it's far too early to get into the specifics. I do want to say that, obviously, a timeframe, I, no one has a crystal ball, and no one has any idea when, when things will start to return to normal. So, any sort of timeframe would be when the public health threat is cleared, and it is safe and appropriate to do so. But I just wanted to let the community know that we are working on this. We will find a way to recognize and honor the class of 2020. It may not be in the traditional way, but hopefully, it'll be a way that you guys will appreciate. And like I said, although we don't know a lot of things right now, one thing I am certain of is that this community always steps up when it's needed, and always supports each other. We've already seen that in all the ways that everyone's been supporting our local businesses, their neighbors, healthcare workers, those less fortunate. And so, I just put the call out to the community to, when the time is appropriate, to step up and help the class of 2020 as well. And so, I look forward to doing that, hopefully sooner rather than later, but, you know, time will tell when that, when that will actually happen. But I just wanted to let the class of 2020 know, hang in there, you guys will get your appropriate recognition. Thanks.
Thank you, Tom. Anybody else? I'm listening, by Joe?
Thanks, I missed my unmuted. You know, I just wanted to frame, not directly talking about our first public comment individual, but I really wanted to step back and frame this, where the public at large, I think we were the second city in all of Georgia to implement any type of, take direct action to our citizenry when this all transpired before the state did. And we were working our best effort to come up with what were those measures to take without having clear guidance from above. Now, we've gotten that, and we look at moving forward, what are the next steps? Let's make sure that above us, i.e. at the state level, that they provide great and clear feedback and what those steps need to entail. You know, I was, I was in the Army, you're trained, you're equipped, you're manned, you're staffed for all sorts of events, and so on. What is it going to, what are the steps going to take to simply...
What is it going to, what are the steps going to take to simply return Georgians back to work and back to quote-unquote "normal"? You know, it's an evolution, and we've never been on this path before, right? And so I want to thank Mayor, Mayor Deutsch and the rest of my peers on council and all the staff for doing what we could do. If you look at DeKalb County's counts right now for COVID-19, look, I want to stay cautiously optimistic, but please keep on doing what you're doing. But look at our counts. I think I'm just going to take a, a leap here, saying that because the city's led and started some measures, we have fewer deaths and fewer positive test cases per capita in DeKalb County. So I, I would stand next to that measure and say we're putting public safety first above all. But yes, we want to return to normal, but we want to make sure that we have standards in place and a clear policy laid out from the state that's going to put it out there for everybody. That's all defined and regulated what that new, new normal looks like. So I look forward to seeing that and hearing that from the state well before that is, takes place. Thank you.
So I just want to expand a tiny bit on what Joe said. On April 2nd, the governor took away local government's ability to regulate businesses. And so the, the gov, the governor and state now have control over when things change for businesses. Just to be clear on that. So a month ago yesterday was to be the state of the city. And as we made the decision to cancel it, who knew the decisions that laid ahead? Who could have imagined? And so I just want to take this, take a moment to thank all our first responders, our healthcare workers, our grocery employees and other essential workers, our 911 operators for whom this is their national week to honor anyway. All these people, Dunwoody residents and beyond, have stepped up to help us keep our community running. I want to really thank our residents for staying home as much as possible and for following the different edicts that have come in the last month. It has not always been simple to keep up, but I would, would guess, based on the conversations I've had with mayors across the region, that we have the very best residents. I didn't need affirmation, but we certainly had fewer problems, and I am very grateful. I want to thank city staff. It's been a wild ride at times with the information coming at us at 1,000 miles an hour. And, and, and of course, council as well. There are definitely, there's definitely an increase in needs in our community. And I want to encourage our residents to give, to support, if you're able, the Community Assistance Center, Jewish Family Services, or Malachi Storehouse. And we actually do a pantry food drive every Tuesday at Malachi's, which is housed in St. Patrick's Church on North Peachtree Road. And so if you're looking for a way to make a small difference or a large difference for families in our community, these are organizations that are on the ground doing the work. And again, I am very grateful for our community. In so many ways, you have proven once again that you go above and beyond. And with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn?
A move by Jim, second by. Second by Pam. All in favor, signify by raising your hands. That's unanimous, Sharon. And thank you all. Stay safe, stay well. And one day we'll see each other in person again. Thank you. Good night.